Good morning. I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four at nine A.M. We are meeting in the San Antonio County. Uh, but we're meeting in the four hundred county center board chambers as well as remotely via Zoom. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is required.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with roll call.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Serano Juan? Commissioner Ramire?
Here.
Chair Ketchum?
Here.
Thank you, Chair. You have a forum, and staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox, and Gonzalez. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open public comment for items not on the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will first call upon members in chambers, followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the ante room. On Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone. And at this time, Madam Chair, we have no comments for this side.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for items not on the regular agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Certainly.
That was the motion by Commissioner Gupta, a second by Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Serano Juan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramire?
Abstain.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carries with or to one.
Thank you. We will now move on to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please introduce item two.
Owner Marina Fasafaya, applicant Gary Kleiner, appellant Alyssa Stegmeier, file number PLN twenty-two-two-zero-zero-one-seven-three, location is seven hundred George Street in Montero, assessor's parcel number zero-three-six-one-zero-three-six-two-zero, and your project planner is Camille Liu.
Uh, project is for construction of a new two-story, two thousand eight hundred and eighteen square foot single-family residence and detached apartment garage located on a six thousand two hundred and forty square feet. Uh, let's see, the um vicinity map is shown on the right, said it located in Montero. And on the left, there's an aerial uh photo of the block showing the project site at the corner. Um, and also the appellant's property, which is separated by a vacant lot. So the parcel is conforming at about six thousand square feet. It's located in a developed area with the exception of the undeveloped lot to the east. The property is flat, and there's a non-significant entry at the front of the property that will be protected along the street. Um, you can see here the detached garage and the house, uh, as well as proposed landscaping. Just to give you a chronology of this project, we've, the county has been processing uh applications on this project site for quite a while. Um, in twenty-fifteen, a previous residential design was approved at the subject site. Uh, then in twenty-twenty, the applicant requested major modification. I would have to say in twenty-fifteen, it was uh there's also uh a lot of public interest in this project. Um, in twenty-twenty, the applicant submits a request for modifications to the design of the project. Due to a substantial change in design, it required a new uh designer view application. Uh, so we informed him of that, and then this particular design was submitted in twenty-twenty-two. The C D R C reviewed the project in twenty-twenty-three and continued the project due to the apparent mass of the second story, the need for additional facade articulation, as well as privacy impacts of the windows of the neighbor on the east side. Uh, and the C D R C acquired uh quote-unquote, I would say, the installation of story poles for its review. Um, in twenty-twenty-four, the applicant submitted revised plans addressing the C D R C's comments, and i- on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, the C D R C approved the project. Um, subject to reducing the lot coverage, which could be done without uh really changes to the home. There were some covered patios. Um, and also no story poles were erected at the time, but the applicant brought this scale model, which is um, which is here right now, uh, to the C D R C meeting, which sat, which the C D R C found that uh satisfied demonstration of project scale relative to the neighborhood. Um, there was also another model that showed more of the homes in the area. And then on April twenty-fifth, the appeal was filed by the appellant. So with regard to the design review district guidelines, the C R C found that uh the project complied with wall articulation requirements uh to minimize the mass and uh blends the the shape and the scale of the home, of this home to the other homes in the neighborhood. They also found that the architectural style and design elements complement the predominant style of nearby homes. They added a condition regarding lot coverage, uh, which has been added as condition five. Um. And yeah, and the design of the main home, of the home was pretty much retained. So in terms of the basis of the appeal, uh, the applicant asserts that the project is out of scale with most of the homes in the neighborhood. Um, staff wanted to point out that the house size was reduced by fifty square feet. There was a lot of wall and facade articulation added. Roof film, which were added to the wear and the sides of the house, and I have some slides which show the changes that were made to address the C D R C's concerns. So on the top, you'll see uh changes to the roof design. Um, and on the bottom, you'll see the rear elevation uh pretty much same. And then you can see here, this is along the east side, which is the side where the appellant has property. Uh, you'll see changes made to the window. The C D R C's um so the, the plans that were not approved are on the bottom, and the plans that are approved are on the top. So you can see that the windows were made smaller. There's a bump out to to sort of break up that long wall. And it's not, it's not a large window. That's uh, the bottom slide shows the plans that were not approved. Uh, you could see there was roof changes to minimize the size of the roof, window changes. This is to the northwest side uh to make windows smaller and uh actually, no, it's change. Uh, the second basis of appeal, the applicant asserts that the C D R C instructed the applicant to construct story poles, and because the applicant did not construct story poles, the project should not have been approved. Um, whilst no story poles were erected, the applicant brought the scale model, which adequately demonstrated uh scale relative to the starting homes. Then as far as number three, the applicant asserts that the four-by-six feet window on the second floor impacts privacy of her family residing at seven-seventy George Street. And as you saw in the previous slide, uh, there's only two windows on the second floor, these east elevation, including um, that window and a very small clear-story window. The window was reduced uh from a larger window previously, showing this one. Uh, the Rose House would be located approximately sixty feet from the appellant's residence because of the intervening lot in between. And the applicant has provided a ten-foot side setback on that side where five feet is required, so choosing the larger setback uh to give the uh east-side neighbor more privacy. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that the project is exempt from a vulnerable review under class three, and also approve the designer review permit, will deny the appeal and approve the design review permit by making their report findings and adopting the conditions of staff's available questions. Applicants here, any?
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff?
You? I do. Go ahead. Um. Uh, Camille, you presented it very well, clarified what was changed. Uh, my only question is that in uh uh, the last attachment of the um report, the size, size of the construction, it, it's still back to the original size of twenty-seven hundred square feet? So I'm not sure what, what is the actual size of the uh home, the residence?
It's as described in the staff report. There were some discrepancies in the plans regarding uh the size of the residence, but it's as presented in the report and as described in this presentation.
In the uh, July twenty-four um uh version, is that the right one? That is a bigger size than?
To look back, but the right one is the size described in this presentation. I can look back and see.
Okay.
There was some discrepancy in the sizes of the plans, and the applicant.
Okay.
Uh, answered that.
All right, okay. No, that is our, I looked at the model and it clarified other things, but thank you.
Any other questions? So the appellant may speak now. You have fifteen minutes, but if you wish to save some of that time for rebuttal following the applicant's time, you can do that.
Second. Right, so important to stand.
Just speak to the microphone, dear.
Okay. Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Lisa Stegmeier. I live at seven-seventy George Street in Montero, I think the appellant. Uh, and the reason I am appealing this decision to approve the project is because the overall size and scale of the home seem to be in conflict with Design, uh, Coast of Designer Committee standards, most notably Section six-five-six-five, six-two-zero, T elements designed in scale. Would feel awful if I did not appeal this decision, as I truly believe it would be a mistake to build this massive home on this particular lot. Here you see the proposed building, as it sits across from the largest building in the area that was recently constructed, and one that the neighbors, uh, how the neighbors stuck is their house was able to pass. Um, requiring, suitably sized. The fact that seven hundred George Street is comparable to the size of twelve-till verge is nearly the same square footage as the house across the street uh is not a good thing. It should be working against the project instead of in support of it. As a side note, I'd like to apologize to owners of twelve-till verge. Please know how this comparison, they're lovely people, and I have no doubt that had they uh received the same type of pushback from neighbors as Gary has over the past two years, they would certainly have downsized their um, I would like to, if we can, zoom in and crop out twelve-twelve uh verge. If that's possible, if that's okay. Okay. So try to imagine the twelve-twelve is not there, because that does not fit the neighborhood. So you can like put your hand over it or whatever. And just look at Gary's home. You can see like my tiny home to the east, and then you can't even see my parents' home, and you cannot see the store, and then there's small homes on the other side. And my question is like, who looks at that and thinks that's a good idea? I mean, to me, that looks so out of scale, like absurd. Um, so, you know, when I show this image to people, their responses are ouch, or gasp, or where's your house, or oh my goodness, or that's a monstrosity. Um, it's never kind of like, be, like, there's no, it's, it just seems kind of completely out of scale. Um, so it's proposed, the pro- the proposed home will stick out awkwardly in a manner that is almost indescribable, which, with the photos I presented today, I'm hoping that it will deliver more accurate description of our situation. Montero is still a country, kind of ranchy in style essence. There's an alpaca farm two blocks to the west, a string of horse pastures that begins two blocks to the east. On Gary's property, I can see great grandparents, owls, hawks, and deer, other mountain lions, foxes, and bobcats also play on that lot. And I attended the first three out of four design review uh for this project. At each meeting, a large number of neighbors spoke up uh against the size and scale of this home. The first Zoom meeting, maybe fifteen to twenty neighbors who either wrote in or spoke. Um, and uh, let's see, at the second meeting, uh, more neighbors spoke up, and at the third meeting, many neighbors showed up uh in person, stating their concerns, and told their letters. And as Camille uh mentioned, there was suggestions for story poles, and then there was a requirement for story poles, and then at the fourth meeting, uh, I guess Gary brought in a model instead of doing the story poles, which the whole neighborhood is accepting story poles, so I think it was kind of uh threw us all off, but um I wasn't able to attend the fourth meeting. I'm a full-time teacher, and I have a baby, and I have a young daughter. Uh, and uh, at that uh moment, I had just opened my own business, so I was very busy. Uh, so during that meeting, when the project passed, uh I listened to the meeting. I heard a lot of big praise for the work that Gary had put into the home in regards to listening to neighbor feedback. However, throughout this process, I have not commented so much other than the overall size of the home, which remained more or less the same um, in terms of square footage, maybe even exactly the same. Um, at this stage of the process, more than twenty neighbors have now openly or spoken their concerns about the size and scale. Okay, we can go inside, thank you. Okay, so it's just another uh picture of a lot. The house would be as tall as those trees there. This is George Street, so it's in order from Gary's property. Gary's property is on the right. Uh, that's my home, just uh, so from right to left, my home, and then my parents, and then uh, what we call the structure, which is also their uh property. Uh, I own the property between Gary's house. So they're all lovely, uh uh lovely one-story homes. They're the only homes on George Street. And not only are they beautifully maintained, but they're unofficially historic homes in Montero, built between eighteen ninety and nineteen ten. It's a really special area in Montero that people enjoy. It's like a thoroughfare, it's a nice little drive-on. And those are the only streets between verge and Cedar Street. We go outside. And then this is Birch Street going south of Gary's property. In order again, uh, all single-story modern homes that fit into the slope of the land, uh, they're beautiful, and yet they're modern. And single-story, and you know, smallish, pretty, actually, it's small, but they're, they're very nice homes. Uh, and six, you can see as you make your way at Birch Street, the houses get a little bigger. There's a second-story home. These are all still in order, uh, but since the second-story home um slopes down with the natural grade of the earth. Then on this slide here, it's a little light, but okay, yellow homes are single-story homes, and the blue ones are two-story homes. And that area is the property. Uh, so uh, there's also uh more single-story homes as you go. Uh, I'm not sure, no, but, so, I have the uh map flipped upside down, so you can see it, respective, that I've been uh displaying the photos. Uh, but I don't want to dwell on this like uh second-story versus one-story issue. The issue's not that Gary's house is two stories. Uh, the issue's the overall mass. Uh, it's not in any way, shape, or form fit this particular area of Montero. I have nothing against large homes. From an environmental standpoint, I do have an opinion regarding two individuals having a home of this size, but that's a totally different topic. Uh, however, I believe homes should fit into the neighborhood, and I believe in green space. To me, it is very obvious that this home does not fit the neighborhood, and I hope that I presented the information in a way that demonstrates the just extreme disproportionate scale here. So this is taken from the Design Review Handbook. My dad was part of creating Coastside Designer Review, the Coastside Designer Review Committee. He along with various people in the committee wrote the C D R C's standards. It appears to me that this home does not meet the standard that new and enlarged homes should respect the scale of the neighborhood, that the building dimensions, shape, and form should appear proportional and complementary to the other homes. Uh, at the time of the meetings, I think it drives, I don't know my head, and I don't think my presentations were convincing, I'm not convincing, uh, project has been highly contested due to its overall mass. And it's my understanding that the purpose of the C D R C is to listen to and address such concerns. I do not feel that our voices were heard, uh, especially during that fourth meeting when the project was approved. When I speak to neighbors, they feel very disappointed, as if their voices were not heard. Uh, and uh, their time was wasted. They do not feel that what they say or do will have its rewards. I'm here to do my best to convince you that this design should not fulfill our expectations. Uh, it's like, okay. Okay, so this is the same, uh, interesting before, over the course of these uh three meetings, uh uh, the applicant has argued that his design fits the size and scale of the neighborhoods. He continuously compares it to twelve-till Birch Street. The recently constructed home that you see that is much larger than all the rest of the homes in that photo. Uh, as previously mentioned, this home should not be used as a positive reference rather than a negative one. Uh, neighbors were very upset when this home was built, but not like to see that everyone built. Two homes that dealt with the neighborhood is much worse than one. There's nothing we can do about that house now. We can't make it smaller. The owners are lovely, and I'm sure they would have reduced the size if they received neighbor pushback. However, let us not allow another massive home to be built on the same corner. Two massive homes would certainly take away from the charm, soul, and beauty of this area. Uh, two wrongs don't make a right. Again, apologies to the rest of this floor. Thank you. I don't know, um, okay. So, uh, back one way. I need the one with Gary's home and the, and of these last. Okay. Oh, no, that's still going. Sorry. See, that, this one's also the first one. Okay, okay. So I feel that despite many neighbors voicing their concerns regarding the overall mass of this building via letters, uh, Zoom speaks, or speeches, uh, speaking during meetings, uh, the C D R C was unable to grasp the severity of this project in terms of its negative impact on neighbors and neighborhood chart. My hope is that this presentation makes it more apparent that the overall square footage that Gary's home should be made smaller. There should be more green spaces included inside, and the second story should be reduced. The overall mass, open scale of this home should be made smaller, the orders preserved, the beauty and soul of the sweet iconic Montero form. To Gary and family, I am not trying to make the likes of people. Um. I feel bad that the changes you made to your home were lost in the details of not the main concern, that being that the design is too large for the area. If it is your dream to build this exact home, might you consider a property in another area of Montero? Uh, there are so many areas of Montero that this home could fit well. Um, or if it's your dream to build on this lot, might you consider a smaller home? Um, I know everyone has different tastes about what this is like. However, like, do people in this room look at this rendering and think this project should be built here? Now, yeah, uh, Montero is special for a reason. We love our home. This appeal is not against Gary, or let's say, instead, it is in favor and support of Montero. So uh, that is the end of my presentation. I would like to thank the members of the Bank Condition for listening to that concern. And I would like to care, clarify that when people are talking about the empty lot, that's uh the property I worked with, I was purchased, uh, so if people don't understand about empty lots, thank you. Okay.
Any, uh, commissioners have questions for the appellant? Thank, okay, did, does she have any time left to save? Okay.
Two minutes and thirty.
So that will be for rebuttal after the, if you wish.
Oh, rebuttal? Not save for one?
Yes, two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we have the applicant. You have fifteen minutes.
Good one. I am, I am due this response to the appeal filed by Alyssa Stegmeier on uh at the, for, for, throughout the planning process of this project, we hope to take to satisfy all C, all C D R C's evaluation and in the days it's admired family, best on the case. Why do you not continue with responsive to the consent of course this G R C, our duty made? We cannot tell, but feel this admired family pregnant interventions at the end, previous appeals, and dragging out the project timeline. Especially since this G R C has now approved this project. As basing your citizens, each passing appeal increasingly jeopardize our chances of realizing our dream home, and is also causing us to incur additional expenses. We request that this appeal will be reviewed at holiday, but Mr. Stegmeier stated that he is only available in October, knowing about San Mateo County Graduate Moratorium, has thus delaying our project for the whole year. The lack of merit of Mr. Meyer latest appeal is for now, now a response of line below. And I will answer some items in that. And items one, price. Mr. Meyer alleges with our project is insanely invasive to your privacy and your children's privacy. Well, because of the placement of second-story wing. On the contrary, we have done everything possible to serve God, to stay my family's privacy. It cannot be reasonably said that any such insanely invasive threat exists. There is a vacant and developed lot located between our property, seven hundred George Street, and Mr. Meyer seventy-seven George Street. This means a distance of over sixty feet separate our future home from Mr. Meyer home. Considerably greater than the distance between our home as a neighboring force on the western and southern side. Uh, maybe we'll go to a power. Yet, and now with the residence from east and from the west and south, which are playing. And it's uh visible here that it's a broken land between us and considerable distance between seventy-seventy and seven hundred. We have already limited our plan to simple aggressive window necessary for fire escape on the eastern facade, noted to accommodate Mr. Meyer's family interest in our project. We're even ready to stay with the relatively narrow transition window despite the C R C offering to enlarge during the more present here. We also plan to plant trees along the eastern edge of our property in order to further its enhance our neighbors' privacy. This will nicely complement the big wood, tight wire plants that Mr. Meyer ethic in our border with a permission, but we can fly. If required by this board, we will further accommodate Mr. Meyer by using the single window facing east to four feet wide, the minimum required for address and is required. It is notable that in doing so, we have done above and beyond the city county requirement for this neighborhood to accommodate Mr. Meyer. Relegation that ship has additional privacy concern beyond those of the rest of the neighborhood is without me. The density of this neighborhood comes with the expectation that folks will be in close proximity. Are we not entitled to have windows? Are we not entitled to have windows for safe address and to let in light? Mr. Meyer is an Asian, is a south that have no interest or desire to view into the form. And she can certainly install window covering, as would be expected in a neighborhood with homes worth pressing. The fact that homes are close together does not create an intrusion. There is no intrinsic right to privacy so great that the hall, each by necessity, will have windows cannot be constructed on a neighboring line. Item number two, project high. Your appeal, the inquiry April twenty four, you, Mr. Meyer, also claimed that all adjacent folks was holding you a single story and this our future home would certainly tower above them. This is not true. In fact, our project is surrounded by other two-story houses on the western and the northern faces. Within a radius of our future home influence, P L M, only twenty-two zero zero one seventy-three, zero twenty-six, that two-story box versus fifteen single-story courts. While most single-story courts are significantly sized square. Can we go to the right this? The show of the project will be everywhere in the whole houses in radius of the property. The fellow. Interesting. In the area of that place, there are three commercial zone properties with max height of thirty-six feet. Practically three-story lot. Two of these commercial zone properties belong to Stig Meyer family. That can develop in time, with the services high, using, using five feet. And ironically, their device, the opinion of Mr. Meyer. The reality of this neighborhood is that in the last fifty years, so the well, the majority of all this traffic have been two-story. This Stig Meyer's continued discharacterization of the neighborhood has modest size, single-story homes grosser outer step is what has been happening over the last five decades. Almost all houses still up to nineteen seventy-five in the area of the flats by two stories. Sixty, yeah, six. And only two or three, it's a monster. And, uh, before nineteen seventy-five, where I built seven two-stories and eleven one-story houses. In the area of the class and closely, there are many tall and large houses. For example, there are eight houses over forty-five hundred square feet of living space. By contrast, most of the small houses were built over seven years ago in the first. Uh, but. Additionally, in radius of the place, there is a large commercial building, eleven eighty-five Acacia Street, that is over ten thousand square feet. It's served as a system living facility. And a large residential building, eight seventy-five George Street, which is four thousand eight hundred sixty square feet living space, seven bedrooms, four hundred twelve closets. It's. It's. Different side. Yeah, this house. This house has four thousand eight hundred sixty square feet. Living space with seven bedrooms and one capacity, just opposite the road the street, cross. The street. From seven. Seven, seven. Yeah. Just across the street from this fire. Out there are large courts. Seven fifteen George Street is a two-story house with two thousand eight hundred seventy square feet of living space. Seven twenty-five George Street house with two thousand six hundred square feet of living space. Eleven ninety, Cedar Street has also. So, so the yards actually across George Street from seven, seven George Street. House. There is three thousand five hundred seventy square feet of living space. And the level sixty to the street was two thousand four hundred ninety. It was interesting that Mr. Stigmaier, uh, he complained besides a lot of houses. But his own home, that well sixty-five Cedar Street is a state looking high two-story building with two thousand six hundred ninety square feet living space and detached garage in the lot, six thousand five hundred twenty-nine square. It's less than smaller. Mass shape instead. Mr. Meyer, you see, you suggest that we fail to make changes required with the related to building mass shape estate. The current iteration of our future call is actually estimate our consideration. First, on the printed, uh, below our finished ground floor, elevation from one seventy feet to one sixty-three point five. We just lowered it to the ground. We lowered it one point five feet. Yeah, and, uh, garage the load. We, uh, father used building high from twenty-seven feet to eight, to twenty-three feet. Even so, current solid loss for structured unit. Basically, I would like to know that the housing as it is on the George Street says height twenty-seven. Our house twenty-three feet plus we are two feet low. So, uh, should not suffice it more than that. That it was. Mr. Meyer has not raised any concern regarding the property to the use of the floor and your own property. Reach a zone for commercial use, allowing for thirty-six, thirty-six tall structure, limited only to five feet. Story court. From C D R C, uh, decision regarding P L M twenty twenty-two year development. So it was where conditions of approval, of approval, there was a submission of full sales, the model was sufficient to meet this project. As we currently reside in Pacifica, we cannot be constantly present to personally attend to the story post and ensure that they do not possess a safety risk as an intersection with type. This can happen. However, a significant cost of ourselves will take in step to accurately illustrate the property's place in the neighborhood with a detailed scale model of our future home as a scale model of the neighborhood. Because of the security, it wasn't able to bring second models that show like in a size of how this. Recent advances in, uh, artificial intelligence, uh, three D metal technology permit us to sadly demonstrate our future home position in the neighborhood without requiring story calls and wasting material. Story calls are no longer mandatory. So projects were recently reviewed by C D R C through factoring out without the use of story. In consideration, all of this, we cannot avoid mentioning this Stig Meyer's family apparent interest in our product. Mr. Meyer father has sought to acquire the lot from me on several locations. We will repeat here for the record what we have expressed to Mr. Meyer, Mrs. Meyer at each juncture of this story. We are not going to sell. It is our decision to be as the owners of the property here and its family must respect. It is clear that in filing this, their appeal, Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Mr. Meyer's have mischaracterized the neighborhood, planning to cite several large and two-story homes right on the block. The reason for this is obvious, self-serving. Just like Myers are not interested in the neighborhood, they are only interested in enjoying the benefit of having open space adjacent to their home and thus seek to preclude construction on our. This Stig Meyer desire to.
Thank you. Can you wrap up, please?
Uh, no. Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Seven.
Uh, you've had, you've had fifteen minutes. That's just the same way you allowed for the.
Yeah.
Appellant.
Yeah, this, uh, yeah, we have been. We have been this difficult process over four years, trying every possible juncture to to find some solution. But we cannot go away from this project because this project is then our American. And I guess, like, thank you. Permission for attention, uh, to your project.
Thank you. Do, do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay. We will now open public comment for item two. Madam clerk, please proceed. Sorry, would you like, would you like to speak for two more minutes? Public comment will be separate, but this is for the.
Hi. So the homes that I gave was showing, the large one that we kept referring to is that red bed and breakfast, uh, also a restaurant. Uh, walking down the way, uh, street called Goose and Carrots. Uh, the, uh, large, the other large shop too showing what I'll go to the dog corner. Like I said, even around the corner, like Karen go to house, uh, Cedar Street, like it might fit over there, it just doesn't fit here again, like that house. Everyone's upset about, uh, that's a helpful call, uh, even though we love owners, uh, and no one wants to see an early one built, so that appears. But it should, it sounds. Yeah, so these are the homes. Oh, yeah. That was it. Yes, um, my parents constructed these two homes. They are two-story homes. Uh, once, uh, you know, they're just, they're nice, they're, they're articulated, uh, they're fit the neighborhood, they're smaller and they're supposed to start. And then the first street, they also built. Uh, I think that's house here, it's the one that is just south of there's probably it's set down, it's a hyper home, it's got nice footage, but it's a beautiful home, like this area, grand state, and just want to show this as examples. And then, uh, I think that I know two people who are going to speak, uh, and before they go, I just want to say that one person is a neighbor and, uh, I think her interest in this property unfortunately has lasted for like various building and work to do with her. She has with, uh, Stig Myers, so I just want to put that out there, that's it's kind of like a different reason why she might be here. And the other person who's going to speak, uh, I think, uh, doesn't live anywhere near this property, live about six blocks away. Uh, and I don't know his interest in project, he starts to carry awkward things, I'm family friends with them both and friends of their children still to this day. So, uh, I feel sad about it, uh, but I do want to speak to the fact that, uh, I do think that their their support of the project is related to, uh, the actual design of the building, uh, and more related to. And that's it.
Thank you.
Very much your time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um. When were these homes built, the ones that you just showed?
So, uh, that you're, but oh, five, oh, seven, one, seven, five, seven, seven, two street, and then first street, uh,
Uh, and if I may ask, um, when was your home built?
Nineteen.
Nineteen? Hundred years.
Yeah.
Hundred years.
Yeah, no, one other corner was like gas station and the bar shop and all the things.
So, huh, about the hundred years. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? They, uh, no. Thank you. So, um, now we'll open public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a reminder to anyone in the room, the speaker slips are located in the anteroom. I will call, I will first call upon members in chambers, followed by speakers on Zoom. On Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone. And I will first call on Karen Wilson, followed by Vic Abadi. And you will have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Karen Wilson. I'm in the sphere of influence, so I received a letter regarding building and I was just kind of. Um. I purchased a one-story house in Montero in nineteen over two, and I did a two-story addition. Although my house is growing smaller, but they did build two, two-story houses next to the one-story portion of the house. Um, so I just honestly want to reiterate, there is such a mix of sizes, shapes, and size, scale of houses. I, I don't see, this house doesn't fit in. They lowered it, they articulated it, and it actually might come out, the monster house that got built across the street. Um, that neighborhood is a lot of commercial zoning, which has thirty-six foot high limits. Uh, very, almost no sound, so the future development could be very large to that. Thank you. Yeah, more questions?
Thank you. I will now call on Vic Abadi, followed by Mark Stigmaier.
Vic Abadi. I'm a consulting geologist in Montero. I support Marina's and Gary's new home construction. Now I asked the planning commission to approve it. I have been half a lifetime in Montero. My wife and I have owned and lived in our house on Seventh Street almost forty-four years and raised four children who are friends with Lisa. I am a self-employed geologist. I have rented office space at Seventh and Main Streets for thirty years. So I've been in town a while. Full disclosure. I am not a disinterested third party here. I have known both parties. The applicant Gary Kleiner and the appellant Elisa Stagmire. Gary and I have been friends for some number of years. And we have some professional interests in common. My wife and I have been friends with Jan and Mark Stagmire for decades. We still exchange small Christmas gifts. I hope that continues after today. And I have known, um, Elisa and her brother since they were in school. In fact, I've been in the water catching waves with the two of them at Montero Beach. I support this project not based on friendship, but because Marina and Gary have complied with the law and have the right to build on their lot. It's a matter of principle for me. And even though I live some distance away, a few blocks away, it's a matter of principle. What's right, that Gary should be able to build his dream home. The planning commission should approve construction because the design complies with codes and ordinances and the design has passed design review. Marina and Gary made concessions to accommodate neighbors' objections, including Elisa's. They lowered the building height and reduced windows and square footage, among other concessions. They show cooperation and respect for the neighbors. Objections to Marina's and Gary's house that it doesn't fit the nature are specious. Doesn't fit compared to what? Well, as Karen Wilson just noted, there are houses of all sizes and scales. And in particular, well, there are many large houses nearby on Birch and Cedar Streets. And compared to those, and especially to the large fortress-like house immediately across Birch Street, which has already appeared this morning. Gary's and Marina's house is too small. Do you want their house to fit the neighborhood? Then it should be better. What is community? Community includes support, help and welcoming. That's how we do community in Montero. The Montero community should welcome rather than oppose Marina and Gary. You can tell from Gary's accent. He's not native USA. He immigrated decades ago and came to Montero to build a home, his dream home. And those fifteen or twenty neighbors that Elisa referenced have piled on him like a mob of bullies. Is that community? Is that how we want him to think we generous Americans are? Welcome him to Montero. I'm almost done. They're not destroying the neighborhood. Their house will increase property values and neighborhood appearance. And by the way, will increase the county's tax fix. That's good for needy people, isn't it? More tax, more money for the needy. I think we all want to help. Finally, I close with this. Elisa's parents, Jan and Mark, used to own that lot and could have kept it to prevent construction. Instead, they sold it for a profit. It now belongs to Marina and Gary, who own it and have the right to build. They will be good made neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention. Please approve the project.
Thank you. I will now call on Mark Stagmire, followed by Janine Stagmire.
My name is Mark Stagmire. I live at seven seventy George Street and have for thirty eight years. I'm a local home builder on the coast. The houses I build range from very small to very large. Uh, in around nineteen ninety nine, I was asked to join a committee to create the building standards for the homes in the little area of San Rafael County. This committee was called the Internet Ordinance for smaller houses. This committee was headed up by supervisor Rich Gordon. We worked together on the standards that would be acceptable to everyone. We got in agreement, closing the gap between the house sizes. The final compromise and Mr. Klein wants to build appropriately and design according to the neighborhood. Thus, C D R C was born. In two thousand and one, the property that we have been renting for fourteen years was being sold. We found a means to purchase it, although although it was a huge financial and mental strain for us to do. It took this opportunity to build a small craftsman homes, which brought neighbors in with the similar values. We constructed two quality eighteen hundreds square foot umbos over the next three years. They were designed and maintained to feel that the neighborhood played. And we did our very best to accommodate the neighborhood's views and private seats. All of our designs were the very best intentions. Though I'd love to keep built, though we would have liked to be building the market that the builders in force is to sell some, some of the properties. One of those was the property of eighteen hundred square foot home with a Frank Lloyd Wright very design. It also fit them very good very well. Two other houses were built by a contractor. Uh, he was required down, down Birch Street. He was required to stay small and step down his projects down the hill so as not to impose on the house below it. He has since sold other lots on Birch Street, one of which he designed and built an Eichler style home, well, if you saw. Since he started a lovely outside protected living space. The other is property in seven hundred George Street. We sold this to a couple who had designed, who had us design a small footprint, modern farmhouse style home. That property was resold to an illness and a divorce, ultimately became the property of Gary Marina. Around that same time, twelve, twelve Birch Street property had gone to design review. It was so large, sitting right between two single story homes that I thought that there's no reason to attend the hearing. Uh, because I knew it would not pass. Being very wrong about that, however, it did. And it is becoming, we don't want to become the precedence for that neighborhood. I met Gary while constructing the Eichler House to the south of his property. And he indicated he would probably build a small house. We talked several times and got along very well, we're the same age down to the same month. We later received a notice from design review for Gary's lot. Yep, that was not for a small house. The patient's not for a small house, but rather taken the approved fourteen hundred square foot house that we had drawn for the previous owner and added another fourteen square feet to it. Uh, it was, it was denied by C D R C. I worked with Gary to design, um, what would be acceptable for both of us. Ultimately, though, we started going with the new project, which is since that time, we've only had C D R C meetings. I'm a close from the meetings, but many neighbors on the board have rejected these projects time after time. This design has remained the same square footage with a lot of makeup that the C D R C has imposed, trying to help them see that it was too big and possibly make it fit in. It's the master's business. As the C R C meeting staff was approved the project, the group of members included the last day of a retiring architect for the and the first hearing for the secondary architect and a standing representative. So they had no history of the previous projects. Seeing so I believe the C V C are, the C D R C has failed. Has failed the committee by allowing the one big house and trying to set a precedence for it's going to set a precedence because once a two story house gets built there. And it's not
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Your time is up.
I really like people have gone thirty minutes. Okay. Anyway.
Thank you. I will now call on Janine Stagmire, followed by the last speaker from chambers, Evan Gottsman.
Morning commissioners, um, my name is Jan Stagmire. I live at seven seventy George Street in Mark and that's all the stuff. Um, we would like to start with that this is not a personal attack on the owners as they have suggested. We have met with Gary and have had many amiable discussions with him since he has bought the property. We collaborated in the past to resolve our differences and have offered to continue to work together with him more recent times. I'm sure he will be a great neighbor along with his wife moving now. The issue that we continue to have is that the project is very is a very close, near image in size and scale to the house that it faces across the street and to which never should have been approved as such. And therein lies the problem. I was one of two neighbors in attendance who commented on the design review meeting at that previous project at twelve, twelve Birch Street. I was concerned over the effect it could have on the two houses adjacent to it and was afraid that it would tower over the surrounding homes. That house now sits there and has been the topic of concern ever since it was built. Comments constantly reflect its inappropriateness. I know that that is the reason that the neighborhood came out in droves and this current project was presented. That house is virtually the maximum size that it could be positioned on a prominent corner of a neighborhood completely surrounded by single story homes and small single story homes. Even though there were written concerns over the impact of the size and scale of those neighborhood residences, the committee seemed rather to be taken by the quality of the drawings and its compliance with the C D R C, with their S A M T O standards, which I think may now be so common. What they overlooked was the grandiose appearance it would project looming over its neighboring houses. They did not realize the impact of their decision until after the home was built, to the dismay of the community, until after it was too late. They have since admitted to the mistake of approving that design in this neighborhood, but at this point, there's nothing that can be done after that. Oh, other than to deny a precedent for your homes. If we were to take that one home out of the picture, we would not be having this discussion today to allow another house. The neighbors are unhappy, which should demand a consent. Now, with this new two seven hundred George Street project, we have another house of the same square footage, more area ratio and general shape that's proposed to sit opposite from that one on another prominent corner. Other than that one house, it will also sit adjacent to and near all single story homes. Even more insulting is that it sits on the crest of a hill above them. There are two story houses beyond the adjacent homes, but they are smaller than the one being proposed, with none of them coming close in square footage and or exposure. I have to note that the statistical data that the applicant has provided in opposition to this does not reflect the streets that are of influence. They are a block of more away and cannot be seen from the intersection where this home is being proposed. The neighborhood consists mostly of first time homeowners and could remain that way if allowed to be so. It doesn't need to become gentrified into up and rising buyers, which will certainly happen if large scale homes are normalized. There are a couple of other comments I would like to make on documents posted by the applicant. The east side elevations on the plans appear to be on a flat lot as, that's the model here. Uh, there's a slope that would either have the house sitting up, the house sitting above grade on the back side that use look at that, uh, elevation, um, which would require, um, two feet drop within a ten foot setback. And, uh, my concern is, uh, of course drainage in that. Also in the drawing, it shows next to the garage, a downward slope that would create, um, a path for water to drain, you know, directly out of the property. And I don't know how that's be um, I'd also like to note that a minimum egress window is not four feet, but two feet. Um, a view of the mountain is north, not east. And the advocate has not given his ration for having six bedrooms. I don't believe this house fits the neighborhood. It is in opposition to the design standards in size and scale. Story pose would validate the claim that it fits in, then perhaps it is the best way to see the real impact of the homes. The owner, along with the neighbors and county members, could have clarity on whether or not it violates those standards. We were all relieved that the committee was uh, the purpose of the design review committee and responsibility of the planning commission is to help maintain unity in the communities as they develop and grow and to protect existing neighborhoods.
Thank you. Can you please wrap up?
The committee has failed us on the project across the street and this project could be as easily easily fail us to. I'm hoping that the planning commission, that you all will consider these thoughts. Thank you for your
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on the last speaker in chambers, Evan Gottsman, followed by Greg Rice on Zoom.
Mornings, commissioners. Thank you for your time and attention. Uh, my name is Evan Gottsman and I am Marina and Gary's son-in-law. I don't want to get lost in personal details, but I'll just say that I lived with my in-laws for six months, not next to, not sixty feet away from uh, but on top of my in-laws for six months, which is not always the best foundation for the relationship with your in-laws, but here I am uh, to speak in support of their project. All of this to say, let that be the strongest endorsement of them as good neighbors. Now to what is most germane to this discussion. Stagmire's desire to surround themselves with open space is simply not a legitimate interest. By contrast, this board must balance the Stagmire's baseless complaints against Gary and Marina's legitimate interests. Gary and Marina are the owners of this property. Like all owners in this area, they want to build a home for themselves and their family. As property owners, Gary and Marina are the ones who have the most significant interest in how to develop their lot, which they purchased at significant expense and for which they pay taxes. Gary and Marina are proposing to construct a residential dwelling based size and scale consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. And they have modified their design several times to accommodate objections. But this current appeal is not legitimate. It is an abuse which this board should not abide. Further, the claims made by the Stagmires are not credible. Mr. Stagmire was a member of the C D R C and has designed and built several two story homes in the area of influence, including twelve thirty four and twelve thirty eight Cedar Street. At one point, as we have heard today, he owned over half of the block, including Gary and Marina's lot. But Mr. Stagmire sold it. Regardless of the reason for selling, he has given up ownership of the slot and in so doing relinquish any meaningful say in how it will be built. So long as Gary and Marina's design applies to the building and zoning requirements, which it does completely. And so long as Gary and Marina's design does not unreasonably burden the neighbors and reasonableness is measured in the context of the overall neighborhood, not just the personal interests of one person, you must approve their plans and deny this appeal. For as long as I've been a part of Gary and Marina's family, I have seen how much they love this area and have always dreamed of a home in Montero. I know that they don't desire an acrimonious process and wish to, wish to put this chapter, which has been a personally challenging one for our family and unnecessary journey on C D R C's funding resources behind all of us. Therefore, we respectfully request that you reject this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I will call on our last speaker, which is Greg Rice. Thank you. Now I will call on our last speaker, which is Greg Rice.
Hello, I think you can hear me now, hopefully.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Uh, I'm Greg Rice. I moved here into a home in Montero in two thousand and twenty. I'm up on Eighth Street, just a few blocks away in a three bed, two bath. Uh, one of the things that drew me to this neighborhood is just the mix of house types and sizes. There's a real great diversity of houses here. Every house really feels unique and different, uh, which is not uncommon to the question we're having today. Um, I'm familiar with the part of the neighborhood that Gary is looking to build a house in and often walk these streets. Um, it's always felt strange to me that there's an open plot there in the middle of town. So I think this project will really help complete the neighborhood. And as mentioned, it's not nearly as large as the house across the street. Um, I've known Gary for a few years now and just want to say I think he would make a great addition to the community. So please reject this appeal.
Thank you. And with that, Madam Chair, there are no further comments for item number two.
Thank you. Do we now close up a comment for item two and to commissioners, any questions, just discussion? Do you have a newsbook?
Um, thank you, Chair Ketchum. Excuse me. I want to thank everybody who came today to talk on that, or it's clear there's a great love of this neighborhood. It's a special place that people care a lot about. And um that people take quality of design seriously. And uh so share my respect of both parties' perspectives. Um, that being the case, however, um, I think this commission has a history of relying on the design review committee to make decisions specific to neighborhood design questions. Um, and while the appellant might not agree with the committee's conclusion in this case, from a staff perspective, I haven't seen anything that really stands out as something the C D R C did that was in violation with the various, you know, policies and regulations that are charged for enforcing. So as in other similar cases, you know, staff has um supported the recommendation or the decision of the C D R C and we continue to we continue to do so in this case. And I'm happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have about that.
Should we start?
All right. Uh, thank you. I am in support of this project because I think um overall I believe that the 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 applicant has gone uh through great lengths to try to accommodate um the design um for the neighborhood. I went and did a little drive around the neighborhood and noticed that there are a significant number of houses that are two story, some bigger than others. So I, you know, I I think that um, the owners have um the right to develop the house that they feel that fits their family. So at this point, I'm going to say that I am in total support of this particular project.
Thank you.
I'd say this is a neighbor, excuse me, as a neighborhood full of collected homes is Montero. I think it's had a whole history of collected homes. Now, the area specifically within a block radius, a lot of one story, much older homes done in a period when it was the original development, but as time has gone on, new and different designs have entered the neighborhood in different heights. I think what they're requesting to build is reasonable. I think the design process they went through came to a reasonable uh conclusion. I kind of like the first design as well as I like this design, but they they worked with the neighborhood and I thought um, what they did was reasonable. I can't come with any findings to deny the project. And so I will support you that the project be built and reject the appeal.
I I think it's a beautiful area. And looking at the model here and and the um design. I I like I like the design and I think things are going to be changing in every neighborhood. So um we cannot say that it's going to stay the same for the rest of our lives. Um, we we have seen uh your home is hundred years old, else comes in and they are going to build a um two story home there too. So I'm totally in support of the project and it looks beautiful to me. So I would deny the appeal and go along with the project. Thank you.
Exploring this neighborhood in person and observing the house size and styles, um as you said, uh, one word came to mind eclectic. I mean amazingly so. And I think and 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 so nothing jumps out as oh, that really doesn't fit. You know, it just doesn't come up because it's that's the overarching theme and the and I think that wha- what may be jarring here is that the oldest, smallest home in probably all of Montero is right next door to this house. And I don't and and it's a hundred years old and times are changing and there and this this home fits all the zoning regulations and they have worked with design review and I just, you know, contemplating this meeting today, I thought I wonder if a design review decision has ever been appealed to the planning commission and and I would, you know, we we're looking at zoning regulations, the things that we normally see quite, things like that. And design review is they they have an expert and a community member at a minimum, uh, and maybe two architects. And they go into depth and they know what to suggest. And I wouldn't have a clue what to suggest to other than to just, I mean, if if for some reason um, everybody was thinking this was too big or something, I I wouldn't, I would say, well, we just have to send it back to C R C because I don't think we're trained for this. And interestingly enough, at the recent C D R C meeting, they were some of the members were asking for more education on the secret because they've been recently asked to uh weigh in on the secret decision and that's not their purview. It has been anyway. And I just feel like that would be difficult. Things that we've done before saying, go back and change this or that. This isn't that kind of thing. And anyway, I think that's fine. So sorry, all that, but I I I support the house and think we should deny the appeal. So.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the design review permit for county file number P L N twenty twenty two one seventy three and find that this project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section fifteen three oh three, Class three A, related to the construction of one single family residence in an urban residential zone. And by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Serano Juan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair of the motion carries.
Thank you all for coming. We will now close item two and uh Madam Clerk. We take, can we take a four minute break? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the next agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The commission is on recess.
Item three, Madam Clerk, please introduce the item.
Information only, North Fair Oaks Community Plan ten year review and your project planner is Will Gibson.
Thank you very much. Uh, good morning Commissioners. Uh, as noted, this item is an informational item on the review of the North First Community Plan. Uh, the plan was adopted back in two thousand and eleven. I think that two of the present commissioners, Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Ramirez were involved in that update process and hopefully those memories are not too painful at this point. Um, and we are approximately halfway through the implementation timeline of the plan, which is twenty five to thirty years. Uh, so Supervisor Slocum's office was very interested in assessment of what is the status of the implementation of the policies and programs in the plan? Uh, which ones are not yet completed and outstanding and a prioritization of the uh ongoing implementation of those policies that have not yet been uh been completed. Um, to that end, we began a comprehensive assessment of the plan uh and engaged a consulting firm, Good City Consulting to undertake that. Good City has been working for the last several years on a broad overview uh of the policies and the plans, a deep dive uh and outreach to the community, to stakeholders, to uh departments and agencies in the county to assess the status and to help us prioritize uh where we are now, what we should focus on going forward and to create some tools for ongoing uh monitoring and assessment of those policies and programs. Their work is now complete uh and they are here to give you an overview of the process and the outcomes of the assessment. So without further ado, I will turn this over to Aaron Ackman from Good City and he will carry the presentation floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Will, and uh good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Aaron Ackman. I'm a principal with Good City Company. We're a local uh local government consultant firm based based actually about a block away from here in downtown Redwood City. I'm really pleased to be here uh for you today. I'm here with uh members of my team, uh Nora Cornblue. She's an Economic Development Associate. Sabina Mora, who's been done eighty ninety percent of this work. Um, she had a baby recently, so she's on a maternity leave. Um, but I know that she misses being here today because this is one of her favorite projects that she's worked on. I will also like to thank members of planning staff as well as members of the Office of Community Affairs and Equity Staff from the County Executive's Office and of course Supervisor Slocum's office. Next slide, please. So in terms of the agenda today, I won't go over um all of these points, but what we intend to do is provide a broad overview of this work. Um, as Will mentioned, this is not, um typically you would see in this role some type of amendment to a plan or a new plan. This was not that. This is a comprehensive assessment of where you where the county is at at the midway point. And even more importantly, anytime that you have hundreds of policies within a planned document, as the commission well knows, it's sometimes hard to focus because there's so much to do. This is an assessment of what's been done, what's ongoing, and then has some recommendations about what to focus on. Um, we'll go over Noah will provide the technical summary and review example, kind of show you how to use this document in the future as well as there's a live implementation dashboard that will be a living document online so that the public and the commission and the North North Fair Oaks Community Council can use this uh whenever there is a new policy proposed or a project underway to see how the county is doing. And then we also have some administrative recommendations, which I also think are important. Anytime you have an organization as large as the county, it's important to be able to set up bodies to track implementation of key documents like this. Um, next slide, please. So in terms of what this plan does, um it evaluates and Will and I already touched on this a bit, but evaluates the progress made. There's over four hundred and fifty policies within this plan, uh three hundred, about three hundred and fifty in the chapters that we're focused on. Uh, and this evaluates the progress and breaks them down into different core uh categories. It makes recommendations related to implementation. Uh, for that we heard there was a significant amount. I'd really like to thank the North Fair Oaks Community Council as well as they provided. We had five meetings with them over the last two years and a lot of their focus was how to reach the community, what type of events to go to, how to listen. So we took their advice and really got out there. Also note that Sabina is a native Spanish and English speaker, speaker. So she was out there uh on the front along with other bilingual speakers that we had there to help people fill out surveys. So this is also going to be a planning tool. We really want this to be able to be a playbook. Um, something that the North Fair Oaks Community Council asked for is actually printed documents of this so they could look through it. And as policies come up to them, as projects could come up to them, they could compare those versus the focus of the recommendations within this plan. Also hope that staff also uses it in the same way. And as a new staff comes on board, there's a a document that they could look at that elaborates on the the plan itself. Uh, next, next slide, please. So uh the report includes accomplishments so far, a table of uh priority policies, uh current status. You will notice that uh online in the on the planning document, you could see there's a pretty large uh assessment, but there's also an appendix that breaks it down even to more detail. So if the the assessment says, yes, this has been accomplished, the appendix details exactly how it's been accomplished and when it was accomplished. Or if there's more to do, tells what there's more to do. And that's where the detailed description comes into play. So what we're looking today, now this is a lot to take in. So what I would say is feel free to provide us some feedback today. The next step is going up to the Board of Supervisors. So if something pops in your mind over the next week to three weeks, feel free to email staff what those are and we can communicate those out to the Board of Supervisors before the final adoption as well. So how can this assessment used to encourage implementation of the North Fair Oaks Community Plan? And is there anything that we might have missed in the assessment, things that you're hearing from the community, things that you've heard from staff, observations that you've had personally that could be incorporated within this assessment document? Next slide. So in terms of objectives, um, there's all those So in terms of objectives, there's all those bubbles there go into feedback, but I think long story short, really what the North Fair Oaks Community Council said to us is make sure, there's somewhat of, and I think everyone in this room is probably familiar with this, is that sometimes there's meeting fatigue. When there's too much going on in community and you get all of these notices going out there to come and come to a workshop and tell us what you want to do. Sometimes there's so many of those, it's hard to tell to those meetings and sometimes it just conflicts with people's schedules. So really the direction that we received from the council was go to where people already are. That's what we did. There was a goal of collect two hundred surveys. We actually did, thanks to a lot of the nonprofit and community partners, we did a lot more than that. So I think overall it was a very, we were able to get a lot of, even though it wasn't a scientific survey, we didn't go to that level of detail, but we did get a lot of qualitative feedback through these surveys and through one-to-one outreach and communication. Next slide. So as you could see, close to three hundred and fifty community and staff surveys, four hundred community leader and organization interviews, so one-on-one or small group interviews. We had twelve pop-up events and that's basically going out to events that were already out there. The list of events is in the assessment itself. Sent out five thousand postcards. So if you lived in North Fair, if you live in North Fair Oaks, you've got a postcard sent to your home, same if you own a business or own a property out there. We had a lot of folks visit the website. We also created explainer videos, both in Spanish and in English that explain what is a community plan? What is an assessment of a community plan? Because as you may have guessed, a lot of folks out there didn't even know a community plan existed. So a lot of this was just an exercise in providing information so that, you know, the first step to transparency really is providing information so that people know the tools that are out there and that's part of the outreach process goals. And of course, everything was available in Spanish and English. So overall, listening was the big part and then trying to steer the recommendations in the report. A was feasible, you know, sometimes community feedback, it's not feasible and you have to be honest with folks that there's certain things that the county can't do or it's not in their jurisdiction to do. But really understanding that and creating that community feedback lens when it came to our recommendations of what to focus on in the plans. Also help county staff, as you may have guessed, in the thirteen years since this plan was originally adopted, there was a lot of turnover county staff and there were newer staff that didn't know that this plan existed, which is very normal in organizations. So part of this, but what was great to understand was everyone was working on on policies and programs and projects that were mentioned within this plan, even though they may not have known that they were mentioned in this plan. So once, a lot of this is just helping county understand how this, how this tool can be used. Then of course, help county develop recommendations as counties doing budgeting in the future, prioritization in the future that this document uses. So here's a snapshot of survey results and the demographics. You may have guessed, most folks who took the survey speak Spanish. So that's why we've made sure to lead the people who could speak both Spanish and English. Next slide. So we also, as I mentioned, had a number of meetings over the last two years. We had the kickoff meeting almost two years ago with the North Fair Oaks Community Council and we've had our most recent meeting on August twenty second. We got positive feedback overall and they were thankful. They also had some good suggestions about where this document can be placed in printed form and in digital form, both in the community as well as decision makers. Next slide. So at this point, I'll turn it over for a few slides to my colleague Noah.
Good morning Commissioners. So I'm gonna walk you through sort of the structure of the report and examples so you can see how you could potentially use this for your decision making. So we did an assessment of six chapters in the North Fair Oaks Plan. They're on the screen there, land use, circulation and parking, infrastructure, health and wellness, housing and economic development. And so for each of the policies in these chapters, we categorized them in one of four ways. And so that was completed policies, those policies that have met their objectives, initiated and partially completed. So those policies that have been started, but there's still more work to do. Ongoing refers to those policies that are expected to basically continue in perpetuity and then not initiated. And so those policies that haven't been started and that's for a variety of reasons. It could be there wasn't funding, priorities have changed or state and local laws have changed. Additionally, each policy was, oh, sorry. We also looked and identified some priority policies and this was really based on that community feedback as well as changes in state law and staff recommendations. And so those are indicated throughout the report with that diamond shape. We tried to make this report very, there's so much information, so we tried to make it very visual so that you could scan it quickly and find what you are looking for. So the example I'm gonna walk you through today is part of the economic development chapter. So each chapter lists the goals and multiple policies under that goal. So for example, goal eight point two is supportive of small and mid-sized businesses. And so under that goal, we have policy two eight point three and that was really focused on commercial corridor revitalization through funding and technical assistance. And so through our assessment, we gave it the status of initiated and partially completed. And so that's in the body of the report. And then like Aaron mentioned, to sort of get a detailed view of why that was given that status, you can go to the appendix. And we did this because there are over three hundred policies in the plan and so we really wanted to include all those in the document, but it made it very long. So the appendix looks very similar to the slide on your screen. And so it gives the policy and then sort of the explanation of what has been accomplished. So there was grant opportunities for small businesses on Middlefield Road and throughout North Fair Oaks. Additionally, there there was the opening of the North Fair Oaks Economic and Employment Center. So there was significant progress made. But through our evaluation, we saw that there was additional or ongoing support that could be provided to businesses as well. So that was why it was given that status. And then additionally, this policy is a priority policy. So it is listed in the body of the report and so you have the priority policy, the current status that's listed in the appendix, and then additionally, a recommendation of what next steps could be and then an explanation about why it should be prioritized. And this one really went highly on our community surveys supporting small businesses. So that was that sort of a very brief overview of how you can use the actual plan document itself and the appendix. So we also created an online dashboard and so this is an interactive infographic that gives you a visualization of progress made towards the objectives in the plan. And so basically in the middle, you see the total number of policies in that chapter. And then online, if you hover over the different colored bars, the number of policies with that status will additionally online, you can filter by chapter. So all of the policies under economic development and look at them, or you could filter by all of the completed policies, plus of all six chapters. And so we tried to make it very easy. And then this implementation dashboard, it's really supposed to be a tool that makes it easy to monitor the progress made towards implementing this plan in the long run and to be updated regularly. And that, all of that is live right now on NFO.
Thank you. So in terms of, is there one slide before that one? Okay, keep on going. In terms of the NFO plan progress and the accomplishments so far, I will highlight one for each one of the category. There's additional bullets and we could feel free to go into those, but I think from a land use standpoint, the most significant thing, and I know this as a planner, how difficult this is to do, is implementation of a comprehensive rezoning program for the North Fair Oaks area. So that was because this commission note completed in twenty twenty-three. Next slide. The second thing is per state law. There's a lot of focus on reducing parking requirements in priority development areas. This is also a difficult task in a lot of ways because you need to weigh some community concerns around this, but this was also something that was done recently. Excellent. Something that probably got the biggest headlines overall from a parking and circulation standpoint is the comprehensive refiguration of Middlefield Road that included pedestrian and bicycle focused and this was substantially completed as of this year. And that will play into some of our recommendations coming up. Next slide. Expanded parking supply, I think every North Fair Oaks Community Council meeting that we are at during public comment, there was someone commenting on parking in the area. So I know that parking is always a big concern within that area and the expanded, the county expanded parking supply by developing and maintaining two surface parking lots over the last decade. Excellent. From an infrastructure standpoint, and this is something that plays into building codes, California law, but also county policy, which is strengthening requirements for new developments to reuse water use and manage stormwater. We will go more into flood control, but obviously managing stormwater both onsite and as a district is becoming increasingly more important as the storms and become more severe. So this is something that has been done over the past decade, but something that will also be the focus of the next decade. Excellent. Samantail County Office Sustainability has been tracking green infrastructure and investigating regional flood vulnerability. One project I'd also like to note is the Bayfront Canal. That is something that actually when I was Planning Director in the city of Redwood City that I worked on along with the county Menlo Park in Atherton as that's where the water is collected from and into the Bayfront Canal and it had been a source of substantial flooding within the North Fair Oaks area as well as in the mobile home parks in the Redwood City and unincorporated area. And that was a big project, something that took over a decade to do, but it was a big accomplishment. Next slide. From a health and wellness standpoint, it's something again we'll touch on for the future, something that's ongoing, but the development improvement of three parks and green spaces along the Hetch Hetchy right of way, really creating this network, network of places for folks that live in the community. Next slide. And the health and wellness, also an establishment of Department of Emergency Services, which of course is very important. And there was great attention paid to the North Fair Oaks community during the pandemic. Excellent. From a housing standpoint, I think all planning staff throughout the county and the Bay Area, the last few years was really focused on the housing element. And that is no different for the North Fair Oaks area. So there was identification of sites for affordable housing as well as a a removal of constraints. Of course, during outreach, one of the top three things that we heard is the lack of affordable housing, not only in North Fair Oaks, but throughout the Bay Area and throughout the county. Excellent. Housing, also funding for nonprofit service providers for foreclosure prevention, homeowner education and renter protections, tenant assistance as well as homeless services. Excellent. From an economic development standpoint, this is something that we started hearing about a few years ago and something that's now in existence, the North Fair Oaks Economic and Employment Center. It's run by the Renaissance Job and Job Train and it's a center storefront right there in North Fair Oaks that store owners and business owners can use the services of. Excellent. Provision of small business grants and support for commercial corridor revitalization. There were a number of small business grants that were in place because of the Middlefield Road construction and even more importantly, because of the pandemic and the impact that happened to small businesses in North Fair Oaks during that time. Excellent. So in terms of our administrative recommendations, I won't focus on all four of those. I think the most important one is the establishment of an interdepartmental team to track and manage implementation of this plan for the final stretch, for the final half of this plan. What we learned from just interviewing folks is that a lot, you know, you have a county organization, it's a large organization and you had a lot of individual departments working on policies and programs and projects within the North Fair Oaks Plan. I think as dollars become less and less to spend on this, I think coordination between the departments in game planning or upcoming budgeting seasons is very important. So whether this meets on a quarterly basis or by a biannual basis, something that pulls the departments together and they have the ability to focus on this plan as they're budgeting for new programs, projects in the future. I also think that there's going to be, need to be someone who's on point, paying attention to the dashboard that's on the website so that it's accurate. And if someone from the community or nonprofit wants to look at it, they know that it's the most recent and relevant information. So in terms of elements for future focus, from a land use standpoint, I think continuing to build out this network of places, especially as new developments coming online, make sure there's community oriented facilities, pocket parks, community gardens, plazas, neighborhood gathering, maybe community centers on the ground floor of new buildings. I think that's going to be a key area for the next ten years. Excellent. As I mentioned, we heard about parking every time we were out there at the North Fair Oaks Community Council meeting. I think parking management is going to be a key role, perhaps some type of parking management plan for the overall area. I think you see a combination of commercial parking spill over into the residential neighborhoods during certain hours of the day, vice versa on other hours of the day and putting together a parking management plan that also considers shared parking, unbundled parking, transportation demand management measures that are required by the state of California. Next slide. Flooding continues, even though the Bayfront Canal issue has been solved, flooding continues during peak stormwater events to be a major issue throughout the Bay Area, throughout Samantail County, in a particular older neighborhoods that may not have the original stormwater infrastructure. So making sure that the county is partnering with some of the uphill neighbors that lead to the flooding within North Fair Oaks to resolve some of those issues, I think will be a key focus over the next decade. Next slide. Now that the Middlefield Road has been made a lot safer for bicycles and pedestrians, we need to see how can there be safer route to schools and through the neighborhoods made so that kids people could get to key areas and not only on Middlefield Road, now that there's that great connection spot in the middle of North Fair Oaks. Excellent. So promote measures to ensure new affordable units are rented to North Fair Oaks residents. One thing that we heard, and you hear this throughout many communities, but in North Fair Oaks in particular, there was a concern that the new developments are not for people who live in those neighborhoods. So I think that we need to make sure that we investigate policies like local preference when there is new affordable housing so that people who've lived in the neighborhood or work in the neighborhood are able A to know what's going on and know that there is the opportunity to live in these new deed restricted homes, but also that there's some preferential program so that if you live or work in the neighborhood, you're higher up in the hierarchy to be able to live there. Excellent. And also for businesses, continue, and I think the Renaissance Center that are going to be able to do this is provide technical assistance and support so that longstanding businesses don't get priced out, that they're able to stay there, they had the leases in place there, they have the tools that they need to continue to market to customers and become and stay sustainable viable businesses. Excellent. So that concludes our presentation, but we're happy to take any feedback or answer any questions that you may have.
Is it? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. Wow, where do we start? So yeah, I, you know, I've been lucky enough to have been you know, around since this whole thing started along with Will. Many people that were part of this. Unfortunately, some people that are no longer with us. But I think that's actually the whole point of having you know, a a plan about this, that this is not for us particularly, this is for the future, future generations of fixing everything that is wrong. fixing everything that is wrong or trying to. So for me, where do I start? I, I'm glad that we have made quite a bit of progress and thank you for, you know, putting this whole way of tracking what we have done and seeing where we're going to move in the future and assessing what has been done, what has worked and maybe what hasn't worked so, so well. Let me see. I would say let's start by maybe drainage, drainage in the area. You know, we, we still need to do quite a bit of it. We still get a lot of flooding in many different areas. I mean, like I have one on the street, just a little bit, you know, maybe two or three hundred feet from where I live. There's a drain that every year it clogs up and in a major downpours. It's hard to go through there because you literally have to go back around and find another way to go because it's a significant thing. Sometimes I just feel like, you know, the county does not go out prior to storms and clean up on time to, so we can clear some of those things so that it doesn't happen, but it's more than that, obviously. It's how inadequate the drainage system is. You mentioned park, you know, we have been able to get some little parks along Hetch Hetchy, which is nice. Actually, I was involved on working on some of those and helping to, to bring them together and helping to get some of the funding for it. Well, that is actually, you know, very nice that it's happening. My concern has always been about using that part of Hetch Hetchy, which they're allowing us to use, that at any time Hetch Hetchy can take it away. And so I would like the county to acquire other areas that are, you know, that can, where that cannot happen. So to create greener parklets in different areas in the community so that we don't lose it at any time. Let me see, parking? Where to start? I mean, we have extreme deficiencies in parking from the commercial side along Middlefield particularly. And I think we, we can kind of identify where some of those problems emanate from. A lot of it has to do with the mechanical shops, body shops that overwhelm the area with cars and prevent other businesses from having their parking space available. And we have, you know, the, the county has purchased some areas to create as parking spaces. And that helps, but again, not enough because you may have one like in the middle of Middlefield, but then if you move to either side, then there's no, not enough. People are not going to walk that far to get to those things. Enforcement of parking, obviously huge. We have I think I, I, I'm going to put the sheriff on the spot here, but I, I really don't think that they do a very good job of enforcing our parking regulations on commercials, but especially on residential also, that, you know, we have the seventy-two hour parking restriction. But we have cars, I can show you pictures actually of cars that I took this morning. They have been there for months. They haven't moved. So that brings us to another issue with regards to how do we make this cars move? So that there's a constant rotation, so there's enough, you know, so other people have a, a chance to park either in front of their houses or, you know, just people that need to park. So I think we have a large inventory of unused cars. I think there are people who are owners of multiple vehicles that they don't use. And I think that as long as parking continues to be free, the, the problem will persist. So I think we need to come up with ways, either by creating permits for residents so that we can make them, make those cars move. But definitely enforce, you know, enforce the seventy-two hour. So anyway, that's just one little thing for, for that. Let me see. Housing. We obviously, you know, are lacking on affordable housing by a significant amount in the county. Now, but with the recent rezoning of the different areas of North Fair Oaks, you know, the county is relying a lot on adding a lot more affordable housing. Now, that's great, but at the same time, I think we have to be careful as to, you know, how we're going to grow. In particular, what I want to bring up is the height, the maximum heights allowed in this rezoned areas of commercial mixed use. Because I think that, you know, talking to the neighbors, everybody is willing to accept some change to the neighborhood from buildings that go from three to four, maybe five stories, but nothing beyond that. And, and, and to basically go back and study every block to see where you're going to be able to allow some of that, those heights. Because when we rezoned some of these things, I think we pretty much said that the maximum should have been about fifty feet, including with the density bonus to a maximum of, of five stories, fifty feet, somewhere around there. But we, I think we were all surprised that there's actually a building that's going to happen, there's going to be eight feet, eight stories high. And the neighbors are definitely not along with that. So I've been talking to the neighbors, although they've been talking to me, you know, because they know that I serve here and they want to know what is going on with that. And, and would like to revisit some of that and, you know, that I think where you can go high or higher in areas where you don't have single story homes and then go up five stories or, or higher. Just can't do that. I mean, you, you're going to seriously change the character of the area. And again, the, the, the people are willing to accept some change to the character of the area, but not to the extreme. I'm going to stop there and let everybody else have a say for now. Yep.
I was wondering if there's any type of community benefits kind of district policy for developers that come in and there's any kind of inclusionary housing, if they're planning to do any development? If, if the permits are going to be looked at by some community body to see, to see if it fits within, you know, community parameters. So I was just wondering if there's any kind of community benefits district type of policy.
So there is no community benefits district. However, you know, any project of significance does go to the North Fair Oaks Community Council. And so they provide input on, you know, whether or not the design of the project fits with the community. But yes, no community benefits district.
Thank you. The one thing I'll add to this, I think this is something that all cities in California and Bay Area are particularly struggling with because the state has taken away most of the local control when it comes to housing. So county can apply objective standards for most housing, but when it comes to like neighborhood character type issues, it becomes much more difficult for the county to make findings, even use the word character when making findings related to affordable and multi-vanishing housing. So it's something that a lot of communities are struggling with, and I, I think it's even more acute struggle when you have an area like North Fair Oaks with single family neighborhoods that's a lower income area as well.
So how will we monitor permit status, entitlement status of projects in North Fair Oaks?
So I think that's a
Yeah, I mean, the projects in North Fair Oaks follow the same, you know, permitting processes. Most other projects in the county, the difference, I think, in North Fair Oaks is we've got limited discretionary permit requirements. I would say a large majority of the developments within North Fair Oaks goes straight to the building permit. So there's limited discretionary review of those. And, you know, once we receive, well, before we receive a building permit application, we provide an opportunity for the developer to come in and do a pre-application consultation with the department. But, you know, once the application is submitted, then we track its progress using our, you know, standard permit tracking system. If, I know some of the commissioners are familiar with it. We have a permit portal on our website where you can view active permits and see what their status is.
Sure.
I'll say one thing, the other overlap could be is every year Director Moniz and his team will have to turn in an annual progress report to Department of Housing and Community Development, and that will detail how many permits have been issued throughout the county, but in North Fair Oaks in particular, and that could kind of be, you know, during these biannual or quarterly meetings where different departments get together, that could be a metric that then is inputted to the dashboard.
Three areas I want to touch on. One is Middlefield. It's really vibrant. It's vibrant more than most other communities, I would say, through El Camino. We're doing something right. Have we identified what we're doing right so we don't damage it?
So I think the thing that makes, I mean, this is my personal opinion, but I think it is also reflected through the community surveys is what makes it is the businesses themselves and the people that go to those businesses. So I think that's really what the vibrancy is, just the mix of businesses that are out there. The fact that they have strong relationships with their customers that make them come back there and just draw people to the area. So I think that's why we have one policy in economic development that we're able to, that the county can continue to provide technical assistance from people who run businesses out there so that they could stay where they are and grow their business. But I think that's the number one ingredient is we got, right?
Yeah, because whatever we do trying to change or improve or whatever we're doing to community, one thing I don't want to do is damage what's working. So, you know, we, if we know what it is that's causing it, we make sure our policies don't come in conflict with that. So that's the one thing, because it's survived two earthquakes. The one earthquake being change of economic circumstances because of the pandemic and the other is the housing. You know, these are really impacting this plan as a way we did not imagine when we were developing everything. And, you know, Middlefield survives nicely. Bay Road next to Stanford. So Stanford's a huge footprint. And have we identified what Stanford needs? Stanford's not going to go away and make it change the whole thing. Have we looked to see what it needs from the community? So there's a good flow back and forth across that street because it's still pretty stark. But the few business bakery business like that, which weren't busy, which I visited before, are now very busy and the prices are going up. You know, I haven't noticed those differences, but I still see like Stanford flows into the community or the community flows into Stanford and there's like something's missing.
So that, no, that didn't, that's, that's interesting. So that didn't come up a lot within the community surveys, but I do think it's important, something that this plan, you know, you could have recommendations. So Stanford is obviously one of the biggest employers within the overall area, although it's in, you know, Redwood City's jurisdiction is still right adjacent to, to the county. So I do think that could be added to one of the recommendations is how do you interact with the large employers so that you make sure those, from an economic development standpoint, understand what the small businesses are and how they could positively affect those small, small businesses.
Yeah, I mean, there's opportunities I think we're missing. The third one is a lot, very long term, but if you don't start now, you never get it. And that is the Dumbarton Rail Corridor. We need a champion. There is nobody championing it out there. It is very important for, to connect this community with the rail network. And not only this side, but the other side. If we don't work on it now, there's even a chance when somewhere in the future, the whole community can be bypassed when it does happen, you know. No one is really picking it up. We, we give we talk about it, you know, in very vague ways and everybody agrees it should be done and until we start putting money and identifying a person to get it done, it isn't going to happen because everybody's waiting for somebody else to do it.
Mr. Hanson, if I may, on, on that, you know, Meta was actually, you know, one of our big leaders on that, but that was up until before COVID. After COVID, everything changed because now the way they're working also is not the same. They don't have all that people in those offices. So, you know, I think they were trying to see if they could move so many of their, the people that were coming from the the East Bay over on a train. But after COVID happened, I think everything just kind of stopped. And, and I think Supervisors look on, you know, the county was the one leading in the county. But I think, I don't know where that stands now because I think everything has come to, to stop. But you, you're right. It needs to, we need some leadership around that and see if we can make that connection.
Yeah, because I look on the long-term plans for, from Regional Measure Three, I don't see the Dumbarton Rail Corridor mentioned at all. You know, we talk about it, there's no money being set aside for it. So if we don't start now, we aren't going to see it and the community will never benefit from it. So those are my three items. So, but I, I really do like where things have been going, you know, there are hits, there are misses. And that, and that we're checking in is the best thing to do.
I, I think it's great that a lot of progress has been made. But I'm not as involved as two esteemed commissioners have been here. So my questions would be, I have more questions than inputs here. So in terms of because this is a long-term plan, right? It's, it's been ongoing. And over the years, the demographics, does the demographics of the area changes? Like in terms of age groups? And how do you deal with that? And how do you deal with that? Have you been working on this long enough to see that?
So I haven't been working on this long enough to say we've been working on it for three years. As I mentioned before, I had owned this company. I was having to also be the planning director in Redwood City, so I was pretty close to the area and paying attention. I also grew up around here, so. I'm familiar with the, with the area. We didn't, you know, I don't think tracking demographics was in the report, but what I, what I will say is. If you pay attention to this, as demographics change. Demographics, I think they have changed, but there's still some of the same needs that were there in 2011. So I think it's going to be up to this interdepartmental group to track things like that, like how is it changing? Have home prices gone up? What have rents gone up? If rents go up another fifty percent. Okay, but you know, that would mean hey, we need even more attention to affordable housing. So I think tracking that would be part of this interdepartmental group. I don't think there's probably home prices have increased significantly, but I think overall the demographics are similar to ten years ago.
Yeah, because the way I look at it is, let's take an example of. We, we keep pushing these public transportation. If the. People living there are getting older. They are not going to be able to get on the public transportation. They will still want to drive their cars. Okay, it, it's happening. I live in South San Francisco and people are older there and they are not taking public transportation. Okay, so it's the same situation. It's same situation there. So, so we need to take that into account. That what. And then if there are younger families also moving in, they should, they would want parks in the area. Green spaces always, always in shortage. How we provide them, that's what we need to look into. And, and, and we know these communities, they love, they love to go out, celebrate. Parks are always full, especially on the weekends. I've seen those. So, so the, those are some of the things. I think economic development you have touched upon already, which is great. So. The other thing I was looking at is, so in terms of health and wellness, what is? What are we providing? As part of the community plan for?
Maybe we go back to the, the health and wellness slide there we could go over. There's dozens of different policies within the health and wellness section, so I could, I could pull it up on my laptop, but I think it'd be important to focus both on. What's been accomplished so far? So maybe we go back to the. The section before this, which is kind of the accomplishment section.
Right, like. The first, first bullet is highlighted and then what is, what are these ones?
So here's areas of future focus, so. But we, we could do both, but yeah, why don't we go back to the first. So here are some things actually, yeah, there we go. So development, we mentioned the park space just because that's for mental health reasons to be able to get out of your house and go into green spaces. Expansion to programs at the Fair Oaks Community Center and the Fair Oaks Library. Collaboration and financial support for after-school programming, childcare and youth initiatives. I think one thing that we saw over the past decade. Countywide, but it was acutely felt here was a lack of affordable childcare options. That was an overall focus. Development of several community gardens, and then of course, opening of the Oak Fair Oaks Health Center with a full-service pharmacy there. Next slide. Establishment of the Department of Emergency Services. Improvements of bike, pedestrian access to health services. So as you mentioned, if they're in a situation, maybe where you can't drive, that the services are provided locally. I think is important. And then just it goes on there. So, you know, simple things like not having a legal dumping, having a legal dumping ordinance to help cut back on that along with enforcement. Being able to mobile app to be able to report code enforcement issues and of course, establishing of a sheriff's office. North Fair Oaks as well as increased local patrols there. So that's just kind of a snapshot. There's a lot more than that within the appendix and the assessment itself.
And, and so the plan is for these to be implemented over what, next?
So a lot of these have worked, these actually have been implemented. So this was progress that's been made. The next slide, we want to go to those on the next section goes over. Potential focus for the next five, three, five, 10 years.
Oh, I.
So, you know, continuing to expand the safe routes to accessible. Mobility. So, you know, the fact that Middlefield is looking great now, it's a lot easier to be a pedestrian or a cyclist, but still you need to get to Middlefield or get across Middlefield, get to schools and other points of interest. Strengthen the Office of Sustainability and Target Resources, Tracking Programs in North Fair Oaks. And I think a lot of this is. You know, as we know, dollars are going to become less and less to make sure as we get the dollars to nonprofits and other organizations, tracking the effectiveness of those dollars to make sure the outcomes are there is important. Identifying secure additional land for parks and trails. As Mr. Ramirez mentioned, you know, the hedge hatchy, I mean, hopefully it won't go after, but the, the county doesn't control that land. It's actually pretty unusual that hedge hatchy allowed anything to happen on that land. And I assume that was a long process to get there.
It, it took us a long time for them to. Give us the chance to do it.
Yeah, because I've seen a lot of other communities be unsuccessful in their requests. So kudos to the county for making it happen to the North Fair Oaks community. But you can see the list goes on, you know, supportive, accessing healthy food options. So the, that, the report, the PowerPoint provides snapshot, there's a lot more within the appendix and the assessment itself.
So, so that you had that implementation dashboard online, those circular ones? So how often would those be updated online?
I mean, I would recommend that they be updated at least quarterly, but ultimately that's going to be. You know, the county manager's office as well as the community development department could decide, but generally, I mean, I think everyone shares the philosophy, whenever you have a database, if it's not accurate, people will stop going to it. So there will be a need to, you know, continually update and refresh it. To maybe go somewhere last updated, you know, May twenty twenty-five or whatever, so people know.
Right, right. Yeah, at least there should be a date there when it was last updated. Yeah, right. Dollars was something of my question, but as, as you said, that, that is something. You just have to see how, how the. Financing comes in for different programs. And, and are there plans to do these surveys more often?
So we do have a recommendation that the community continue to be surveyed and informed. Ultimately, you know, that's going to be up to the board of supervisors and the county manager's office, how that's helped, but seems like everyone's on board for that. That you continually, I think it's just as important, the surveys actually serve to, for us to get feedback that also provide information. And when you're out there in community, when they find out there's this plan and it's all these services, I think that's helpful as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Very nice.
May, may I say something? You mentioned about the mobile app for reporting. Things around North Fair Oaks. It's not working so well. All right, so just a heads up.
In terms of like machiness or?
It, yeah, it's very glitchy. I've reported, I reported something about two years ago. And it got cleaned up, so no problem with that, but. I haven't been able to remove it that has been taken, been taken care of. And I get a message back. Every six months or so that still. I still have it there, still pending, and I've tried in many ways to try to communicate with someone. But even more lately, somehow it doesn't allow you. I guess depending on where you are, that it just doesn't want to allow you to, to report. So, yeah. That's it.
Steve, it sounds like you have to open a ticket with the IT department.
Yeah, I will certainly look into that.
Okay, thanks.
And do you know, was it an action taken by Public Works to clean up? Illegal dump site, is that?
That was, yeah, yeah, it has to, it had to be.
Yeah, let me follow up with them. I think somebody on their end needs to close out that case, but it sounds like you've already pursued that, so.
I, I, well, I pursued, I pursued it through the app to see, because it says, you know, your, your reports and all that. And I've left messages there to say, this has been taken care of. Can you please just remove it? And it hasn't been done, so. Oh, one more thing, actually, if you try to report anything that is on the, the train tracks. It doesn't allow you to do it.
My. When you mentioned. Parking, the parking issue, and I, I know you had said this when I brought it up about Airport Street in Princeton, similar situation. Particularly some parts, some aspects of the. I'm just saying that whatever solutions are needed, this is about storage, not parking. It's about storage. Like the. Junk car dealers storing inventory on the street for years or, or, you know, and it's like. Some magical way to make this stop and, and so, yes, the, the midcoast has, well, in the industrial area of the midcoast, that, that is the problem. And also, of course, we have to consider coastal access, but basically better use of. You know, our streets for transportation or are they for you to store your stuff and? So, yes, a common interest there, just wanted to say that and thank you for your input, everybody's. Anybody else have anything to say? Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Great feedback. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, great work and thank you for, you know, helping us with this whole thing. Will, thank you very much for continuing to be part of this and I know. You, you know the history, so you, you'll stay on top of it. Thank you.
Yes, we have these few precious staff members who have the long-term. Memory of all these things. Okay. So we will now close item three and move on to items four through six from the director.
I, I do not have any correspondence to report, so moving on to item five. We will have an information item presented for your consideration at the next meeting. The next meeting will be November thirteenth. And that information item is about the Midcoast Transportation Demand Management Program that we've been working with the city of Hat Moon Bay on. Call it Get There Together. And so looking forward to updating you on the progress with that plan. We have two additional items scheduled for that meeting. On the consent calendar, we have a general plan conformity for acquisition by Mid Pen Open Space and La Honda. And we have a design review and non-conforming use permit for an addition and remodel to an existing residence on the coast side that's got a non-conforming setback. Moving on to item six. I wanted to report that yesterday's Board of Supervisors meeting, we received unanimous approval of the update to the tree regulations. So those updates will take effect within thirty days outside the coastal zone. For the coastal zone, we will be submitting a local coastal program amendment to the Coastal Commission for them to hopefully certify these changes. Also, the board recognize, recognized Tim Fox for his twenty years of service with the county, so congrats to Tim.
Congratulations.
Yes, his service to our department has been just outstanding throughout those years and we couldn't do what we do without him, so thanks to Tim. At the upcoming Board of Supervisors meetings on November twelfth. You will be presenting a new version of the reach code, building reach code to the board. This has been a collaborative effort with the Office of Sustainability. This commission might recall that. We previously, as a county, adopted a reach code that required new development, new homes to be built all-electric. There was a lawsuit in Berkeley that called that requirement into question. It was put on hold given that legal landscape. But we've come up with an alternative approach. This alternative approach is what we expect will be contained in the next version of the building code coming from the state, so. Although these updates don't come to the Planning Commission because they're strictly building code. Every three years, the state updates the California Building Code and local governments are required to adopt those changes. So the reach code that we're presenting, rather than requiring all-electric, it sets performance standards. And one of the most straightforward ways of meeting the performance standards regarding emission limitations is to be all-electric. But if you choose not to go all-electric, you can achieve those performance standards through other means. You know, that performance-based approach was contemplated previously but rejected because. The formula for determining compliance with these performance standards was quite difficult and it was hard to have the expertise to, you know, do the type of evaluation. What's changed is that the state's provided new modeling tools that allows us to do this performance analysis. Using the tools provided by the state, so we don't need to have as much in-house expertise to do the performance analysis. And, you know, I, I think this county has always had a desire and willingness to be on the cutting edge when it comes to. Addressing climate change and reducing emissions and so. Moving this forward in advance of the upcoming building code, I think is consistent with that ongoing objective. And then at the. Following Board of Supervisors meeting, which will be on November nineteenth, we will be presenting updates to our planning and building fee schedule. Our fee schedule hasn't been updated in many years and. Given the increased cost of providing the services we provide, we are finally getting around to doing that. We'll also be bringing forward the North Fair Oaks ten plant, ten-year review that you heard today. So that will be the meeting at which. We'll ask for the board's endorsement of this review. The final thing I'll mention is, you know, I think we're all looking forward to moving into the new chambers. It's a beautiful room. The board has met there successfully. I think three times now. For those of you who may have tuned in to watch it online, you may have noticed that there's been issues with the volume and the sound. Volume, and so. They are in the process of correcting that issue and they want to have the new audio system that they'll be using in place before. They train the other departments on how to use it. So we've been asked to. Be patient while they complete that upgrade. At the same time. As you may have noticed, you know, this room has posed some technical challenges and. So we will be working hard with our counterparts and the other departments to try and make this move as quickly as possible. But at this point, I can't promise it will be by next meeting, but Angela will certainly keep you all posted on that. So that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just a quick question, Steve. Been hearing and reading a lot of issues with parking enforcement leaders. Et cetera, in the paper and just this presentation here. Has any, and this is more of a DPW thing perhaps, but is, is, are we experiencing any kind of? Similar issues that, that you're hearing any complaints at all?
I think the most common complaint related to parking is are some of the issues that came up to. Issues that came up today with like auto businesses overflow into, um. Parking areas that should be available for the public and, um. Our code compliance unit is actively working on a number of cases that are trying to bring those businesses into compliance with the limitations on how they. Uh, use the public right of way. Um, it's a constant challenge for our enforcement unit because, you know. Oftentimes we'll get the problem corrected only to have to revisit it, um, a few months later. But it's something that, um, we continue to work on. Um, and as far as. You know, enforcement of parking restrictions, that's something that, um, we can certainly. Bring to the attention of the sheriff's office. It is the sheriff's office that does a lot, uh, the majority of the parking enforcement. So. Certainly, um, pass on the concerns that were expressed today in hopes that they can, um, enhance those enforcement efforts.
Any other? Business here? Okay, okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.